Wow. Look at this audience out here. What a... Boy, all the brain trust of Canyon City is here, huh? Wow. So, welcome you all. And would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Good evening. Mayor Troutman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Meisner?
Here.
Huckus?
Come back.
Hammer? Gonzalez? Cochran?
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Today, we're going to talk about Urban Renewal Authority Presentation with Ricker and Cunningham. Is that a... Was that a dance act at one time?
It could be.
It could be?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it sounds good. Well, welcome. I'm glad you're here to talk about that. And where we'd like to start it. Appreciate it. Go right ahead.
I think that would be me. So, we're gonna... After speaking with Ryan and actually a little bit of background with Cory, who we've worked with several times over the years in different communities, we got a little bit of background on kind of what brought you to this point and that Cory had given you kind of a very high-level overview of urban renewal processes and that when we talked to Ryan the other day...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is your mic on and are you talking into it? They're not able to hear you.
Is that better? Okay. Hang on. It's on.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah. She just keep it closer.
Should I start over or no?
Oh, no.
Okay. I hope not because I don't know what I said. But we decided to tailor the presentation. We do this all over the state and many times a year. And especially as the legislation changes or new issues come up around urban renewal, we try and keep it very relevant. But we've got kind of a standard, kind of the high points that always come up that people ask us about. But after speaking with Ryan and Cory, we thought we might front-load with things that might be particularly relevant to you guys with more of kind of the standard questions at the back. And we're here for you. We've been doing this for over 30 years. We've done over 75% of all the urban renewal work, definitely in the last decade or plus. As they're TIF advisors to existing urban renewal authorities or in just the creation of the documents and the authority itself, many times we continue on and help projects through. You know, you've got the attorney, so always from a legal perspective. But as real estate economists and community strategists, we bring not only the experience of putting these documents together, but pushing projects over the finish line, whether it's assembling different kinds of financing, making sure things line up with your policies and regulations, kind of the whole package. And I'll keep moving in the interest of everyone's time. But if you want any questions about our background or experience or communities we've worked in or any of that, just let us know. So, let's see here. So, what we thought we'd do, and again, our time, it's for you. So, if you want me to move on from something or spend a little more time, please do. So, by saying that, I wanted to make sure you knew what we have in the document in the presentation. And we've already saved that here, so you'll have that however Ryan wants to put it up online or whatever. We also have three handouts that we thought might be valuable after we leave. Did anybody have a chance to grab those? They were on the table. So, you're okay? Okay. Great. And two, there should be enough for you guys, too. And again, feel free to follow up any of that. So, we thought what we'd walk you through first is kind of the key process milestones. This has changed since House Bill 1380.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. I knew that. 1348 passed in 2015, going into effect in January of 2016. And that often comes up for anybody who is familiar with urban renewal, kind of pre that House bill. And so, I was going to highlight some of the differences in our process. Talk a little bit about the criteria for defining an area. And when I say area, I really mean kind of the commencement of the urban renewal process, which is really defining the survey area. There's a separate step if you want to modify based on what you learned from the survey, if you want to modify for the plan area. But we'll cover that. And then, I just pulled up a couple of plans from your existing documents because I think it'll warrant a discussion about what we think you might want to consider, assuming you want to move forward with this, pursuing this kind of funding mechanism in your community, what you might think about when you're looking at your potential boundaries. Eligible district expenses. This really ties in because we already know that one of the things you guys are looking at, well, actually, all three, if you think about it, with downtown Riverfront and US-50 expenses. Many times, well, people have a perception because they know of a project in another community. Let's say Belmar Shopping Center in Lakewood. That's kind of a famous one in Colorado. They think it's really just private sector assistance. But many communities use it to finance some of their capital improvements, both for remediation of blighting conditions as well as to accelerate the market and have the private sector come in and leverage that. So, I just wanted to cover that a little bit to kind of illustrate what's eligible for funding assistance. And then, the revenue sharing discussion. This is where we talk about how communication between the urban renewal authority and the various taxing entities, how it's beginning to play out over the last couple of years because of the new House bill and what some of the ramifications of that were. Then, we have our illustration of tax increment financing. I always say, we can work with communities, you know, in an urban renewal authority board for 10, 15 years. And even us, having done this for over 30 years, and there's always something new. We learn or discover or, you know, it just gets thrown in the mix and it kind of pauses us or causes us to pause. And that tax increment financing, I always want to make a point. Don't feel stupid if you don't get it because it's complex. And I've seen after years of people sitting on an urban renewal authority board, I can see when the lights go on and it all resonates. So, you can get by, but then something just kind of clicks. So, I don't think we can ever revisit this graphic enough. Then, I'll just let you know what the handouts are and how you might want to use those going forward. We've got before and after project examples. Those are fun. We probably won't get to them, but again, you'll have them. And then, a glossary of terms, just so, you know, you can talk urban renewal after we leave, which is super fun. Okay. So, here's how the process has really changed. We used to talk about urban renewal like a stool because you've got a three-legged stool. And we always said, well, there's a condition survey, the urban renewal plan, and the impact report, which for years was the county impact report. So, we talked about the process in terms of preparing those three documents, which is really what you need to go before city council and have them consider adoption of an urban renewal plan. We believe, because of how things have changed legislatively, that it's really become less about those three silos and more about the phase that you're in as it relates to yourselves and the other taxing entities and pushing projects over the finish line. So, we call the pre-planning phase, defining that survey area. And again, we'll have a very customized discussion with you about that. Authorizing preparation of the survey because, at least what I've found, and I suspect Cory would agree, after the House bill was passed, there's a lot more deadlines that are referenced in the statute. And I always say that, as many times as I've testified on an urban renewal case, we've never lost, actually, we've never lost, but we've definitely never lost on the content of the urban renewal plan or what it was attempting to do, or even the numbers that we attached to it. If there was a hiccup or a challenge, I should say, it was usually on the process. And unlike, you know, kind of the other work we do, if we're working on private development work or work with communities doing projects where you want to be nimble and iterative and all that, this is the most straight-line process in the world. And it's because you've got to be perfect because you can't mess up on process. And it's very difficult. It's possible sometimes, but it's very difficult to kind of amend your course because it almost requires going back to step one. Making sure this notice was here. This person found out about it. These boundaries were defined. Everything was documented along the way. And so, one of the things that we're seeing that more and more attorneys are doing is not just following the process we've always followed, but almost memorializing every step, whether it's a council resolution or whether it's sitting as urban renewal authority board, you know, passing a motion and very formalizing it on this date. That's something that, as rigid as we were and as perfect as we tried to be in our process, there wasn't as much of that and there tends to be now. So, authorizing preparation of the survey in some formalized way, notifying property owners of the survey. I always make a point here that when you commence the survey, you're required by the statute to notify the property owners within the boundary. You are not required, and again, you can always do more, but you're not required to notify business owners at that point. So, if you have like a downtown and somebody owns a building and you've got tenants, you're not required to notify the tenants if, in fact, they're different than the property owner. However, at the end of the process, and this would fall under the third silo negotiation phase, when you're going to a public hearing, that final step to consider adoption, you are required to notify both property owners, and we say business interests. The obvious ones would be tenants, owners of businesses. But we've even had instances where a small airport was included in our study area and people leased hangars at the airport. That was considered a business interest. So, anybody with an interest in the area. So, it's a much more comprehensive notification in addition to being in the paper and they've got all kinds of rules, how many days and all of that. And then, finally, in that pre-planning phase, and I can say again, after more than three decades of doing this, I've, you know, we've had the benefit of working with some great communities and great urban renewal authorities, really without exception. And if you think of the percent I shared with you earlier, that's a lot of really good, well-minded people. But some did notify taxing entities at this point. Some said, let's wait and see what we find from the survey, you know, and then maybe they notify them partway in. Some wait until they would share, you know, put a notice up. These documents are in house 30 days before the hearing. Please come look. There's all kinds of kind of levels that that would happen. More and more, because of those dates and deadlines that are in the statute now, it's at this very early stage that we identify and notify the taxing entities, that the survey's commencing, that the community's considering, you know, creation of an urban renewal plan, and they're beginning those discussions. And, you know, we like that. We've always thought that was a good practice. But an important reason for doing it at this stage, too, not just for transparency and all of that, is that it does now say in the statute that there's a period of time within which negotiations have to occur before you can even consider it at a public hearing. So, better to have those discussions, you know, as early in the process as makes sense when you've got numbers to share, boundaries to share, intentions to share, all of that. The planning... Then, we move on to the planning phase. And that's where you complete the condition survey. One question that gets asked of us, when you haven't, like, there's a community we'll go into and they don't have an urban renewal authority yet, one of the requirements is, you know, you'll have a petition that has to be signed by a certain number of people. Council will have to take formal action. But you also have to have some sort of verification that there's the presence of light somewhere. And then, it's like, where? Well, the way the statute is, it must be somewhere within the community, okay, to create the authority. Ideally, if you're already thinking towards a plan area, you know, you've got somebody arms-length independent who can say, yes, you know, those blighting conditions exist. We often prepare those letters to be presented to council along with the other requirements before you consider that. So, some people will say, well, haven't we already done? You know, when I say, okay, the first step is the condition survey, and they'll say, well, haven't we already proven up light because we couldn't have created the authority to do that? Well, when you create the authority, it's a much broader, is it present somewhere within the municipal boundaries where this tool can be used? When we do it in this instance, it's are the requisite number as per the statute of factors present somewhere within this study area boundary that we've defined, okay? So, it gets a lot more fine-tuned. Then, depending on how those results come back, you may decide to keep your plan area boundaries coterminous, the same as your condition survey. Or you may feel like, wow, I really, I learned something from that. And I thought there were a lot more adverse conditions here, but they all tend to be concentrated here. And, boy, you know, we don't have any vision for something happening there for a long time. So, you can bring that district or that plan area boundary in. You can't go out unless you start over because then you have to notify all the property owners that are in the new boundary that weren't notified. That's the perfect example of why it's so linear. So, you can start over. You've just added time. Then, you go forth and prepare the plan, you know, identify and analyze potential urban renewal projects. I can tell you, in the past, some communities set up urban renewal plan areas almost as an incentive to say, we've got this funding mechanism in place and if projects come forward, you're not going to wait six months for us to put this thing in place. It's already ready to go. With the change in the statute, they've put kind of a higher threshold, I think it would be fair to say, on the identification and definition of urban renewal projects, which has kind of lent itself to communities waiting until they have a pretty good idea of how those resources might be used. And, you know, good or bad, I saw merits in both, but that's kind of how this has flushed out. And when we say that, a good idea of the projects, it's not that you have to have an actual developer lined up, that he's already lined up his financing, that he's got all of his entitlements. He could be starting or she could be starting that process, but you've got an eye towards something. And, you know, in the past, there's been more ambiguity in some instances. So, that's kind of where we are today. And then, preparing the impact reports, here's the other big change. I said, I referenced county impact reports. It used to be that the statute only required an impact report, meaning a projection of tax increment financing and the potential impact to the county from a tax revenue standpoint that would, you know, and only property taxes that might be diverted into the urban renewal fund for improvements in the area. It really was the counties. But I can tell you from experience, all of our clients, we always recommended, if you're going to do it for the county, why wouldn't you do it for everybody? I mean, if for no other reason than you're sitting at the table and if they have a perception or a belief or a fear or whatever that there's going to be an adverse impact or they have some idea of how much money it might be, why not come to the table with real numbers? And so, we've always recommended it. And I can't think of one instance where we didn't do it. The statute just requires it now. So, I mean, our practice is exactly the same as it was. So, that's one change. And then, in the final phase, we're, we've notified the taxing entities. When I talked about that timeframe that commences when you negotiate, I said identify and notify them here. And it's true that you do that there. But you might not start that timeframe until you actually have those impact reports to take to them. You have something in hand and you have numbers to talk about. Some start earlier if they have known numbers or, you know, whatever. That's more rare. Usually happens, you know, again, when you've got something, maybe everything's not finalized in terms of documentation, but you've got a pretty good idea of your project and its revenues and its costs and how that translates into increment. And then, documenting that in the impact report. At some point between two and three, you begin those negotiations. And again, all that has to happen. It has to be memorialized in some way, those agreements, before council can consider adoption of the plan. And that is a different thing than it used to be. Formalizing agreements, schedule the public hearing, notifying, presenting the plan to Planning Commission. That happens before the, you know, within that timeframe, before the public hearing. You have the hearing. Once the plan, assuming it's adopted, you notify the county assessor of the plan's adoption so they can put their processes in place to begin to keep track of increment in the area. And then, you go forth and implement. The timeframe, we put five to 12 months. Boy, we had a really hairy one a couple of years ago that took a year and a half. It was going great and then it went off the rails and it took more than 12 months. Five months. Cory's probably laughing and saying, wow, that's incredibly optimistic, right? You are. Okay. But, you know, it all depends. It really all depends on what your objectives are, if there's something driving your deadline and if that's a shared issue or project or objective with the other taxing entities. When that's the case, everybody's online and everybody's moving that train. And that would be the instance where it could happen that quickly, given all the, you know, statutory deadlines and notifications and all of that. So, that is about as fast. It used to be three months, we would say, and that was almost reckless. And then, the other issue that can affect your timing is how much education you want to do. Want to do, choose to do, whatever. If you want to have community meetings, people that have property outside the area, but, you know, your constituents are just interested. We do those all the time. And so, how much of that will affect your timing as well? Okay. Criteria for defining the vision. And we wanted to add this slide because the next slide shows some of your plan areas. Interestingly, and we debated on the way down, should two be one or one be two? And what we decided was those top two criteria are absolutely essential. The rest are incredibly important and informative. So, number one, all of this should really go back to your community vision, your comprehensive plan, your sub-area plans, whatever those are, that say, we have a vision, we have an intention for a specific area. And then, based on that, in that area, is there the potential or is there the existence of blighting conditions as defined by the statute at a threshold that would potentially qualify that area, the project, you know, the area around it, however you define that, for an urban renewal designation? Other factors that are important are the property ownership. If, if within that area, let's say, you've got four properties. And let's say you're thinking about a fifth because it's on the corridor and it only makes sense because you want to make some gateway improvements, but that fifth property owner is over my dead body, no way, just totally dead-set against it. You know, yes, council could go forward, but sometimes that's not worth it, right? And so, how amenable they are, how interested, how much they understand, how they can leverage this resource? If there's public land or private land, what the zoning or land use is. Many times, you'll get people coming out because it's interesting. You'll sometimes get more residential owners out than commercial. And the truth is, this isn't a residential tool. This is a commercial tool. But there's a fear that somebody's going to want my house. And, you know, when you can sit them down and explain, A, this isn't a tool for residential and why would they necessarily want your house? I mean, this is about creating a mechanism to overcome a financial hurdle to get a project forward. And then, I see too few commercial people coming and saying, how can I take advantage of this when this is a resource for them? So, that's just something we've observed. But again, looking at your ownership, your zoning, assemblages, big parcels where big projects can happen, all of that. If there's imminent property investment or reinvestment, if there is this project, whether it's a public project you've defined in your plans, private sectors come forward and say, I really want to do this, but I can't make the numbers work. The potential in terms of the boundary of having multiple projects in one or more areas. How is it connected? You know, what we understand is that you've got these areas that are either adjacent to or proximate or near the US-50 corridor. That's all you need. The connectedness, they could be here, here, and here. All you're required to do to create one plan area is connect them by like a right-of-way. We've used rail right-of-ways. We've used trail right-of-ways. The obvious one is a physical vehicular right-of-way. Existing funding mechanisms. You have a DDA, right?
No.
No. I saw it on the website. Why did I see that on the website?
There was an attempt at one point.
Oh, okay. 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 Thank you for answering.
Can you take that off the website?
Yeah. Okay. And I just saw it and I thought, why hadn't I heard of that before? Just interestingly, in Longmont, they had a DDA. This has happened a couple of times. They had a DDA and it had a TIF that was running. And I think it had like 12 years left. And then, they were looking at a URA that a portion of it was going to overlap the DDA. Well, you know, you can't take that pig to slaughter twice, right? So, it was generating TIF for the DDA. It can't also be generating the same TIF, you know, you can't create it twice for the URA. So, we look for either conflicts. But more often, we look for the possibility of leveraging the resources from multiple districts or funding mechanisms because they can be used to layer. And many times, it takes more than one to get, you know, a project finished or complete major capital improvements. So, again, that's always something we take a look at. And then, also, if you have planned or proposed capital investments, you know, it's nice as a city, if you, you know, sometimes you just have to spend the money to keep property values moving or life safety or health or welfare or whatever it is. But how nice if you do it in a way and in a location where it's strategically positioned to leverage a different additional private investment so you have a return on your investment? You may have had to do it, but why can't you leverage investment as well?
Before we leave this slide, I just wanted to underscore what Ann said about community vision. It's really the reason why your Planning Commission is the first step in that approval process of the ultimate plan is to make sure that it does adhere to your comprehensive plan and other planning documents that you've already adopted. I think the other thing it does is it makes sure that any projects that come in as part of urban renewal, I think there's a perception out there sometimes that urban renewal authorities operate independently of the city's approval process, and that's not true. Whatever happens in the urban renewal area still has to come and get all the entitlements, all the approvals that a regular project would. So, there is that. You know, there's always going to be that close relationship between any project happening in an urban renewal area and your community vision ultimately.
So, this is for illustrative purposes, but if we want to come back to it, if you've got specific questions. But really, we wanted to show, just because you've done such good work and planning, this shows if you've got projects in any or all of these areas or maybe you want to stretch further beyond, you have that connectedness. So, one of the decisions you would make, assuming you move forward, would be, would we have given, and it could be based on project timing or a variety of things we can talk about. But you can do a separate one, let's say, for each. If you had one in every area, you could do one dis, one plan area. Each could have their own TIF district. You've got some options here. But I thought this was a good illustration to just show you, you've got that connectedness. And even if you, let's say, you had something out here, as long as it's, well, there's always these nuances. I was going to say, as long as it's within the municipal boundaries, which is really the general rule of thumb. There are instances where there's property or a project in the county and if they're amenable to it, they can agree to be in. But let's just stick with what happens most of the time. But let's say it's within the municipal boundaries and you've got something here. As long as you can two-connect by a right-of-way, you could have that one plan area if you wanted to. I always say Denver's got like 35 plan areas. Colorado Springs has like 20. Pueblo has like 10. And then, there's others that have one and they have just a bunch of projects within them. So, got some flexibility there. This is probably particularly interesting. Are any private sector developers or are you taxing entity reps? Private. Okay. Taxing entity, everybody?
No. I'm the only non-tax.
Okay. This one's for you. So, what this shows is, the way the statu, oh, I should pull up. The way the statute is written, it says that eligible expenses are primarily those that provide a public benefit. So, the example I use is... So the example I use is, if you own a restaurant and you change the wallpaper, you're probably not going to pay more in taxes, right? And so that would not be an eligible expense. But if you're going to put a patio area out there and increase your seating, which is going to, you know, from an assessment standpoint, at least the income approach, you're going to increase in value, but you've also put up some additional public infrastructure. If you're going to make an improvement that's going to require that you pay more in taxes, and not because taxes increased, and again, to remind everybody, urban renewal does not add any tax at all, then it's probably eligible, but, you know, there's always some negotiation. It can't just be for the benefit of the personal property owner. It has to provide a benefit to the public, or the community, or the street, or the neighborhood, or the district, or whatever. Landscaping is, you know, enhanced landscaping is considered an eligible expense, because if your neighbor does something and it looks better, it's going to bring things up. So, you know, those are kind of the reaches. The more obvious ones become parking structures. Somebody does a project and they put up some sort of parking structure and they only need two floors, sometimes the authority will say, wow, we've been trying to get more parking downtown. If you put a third floor up, or a third layer of parking, we'll give you even more tax increment to finance that. So those are kind of the obvious ones. The other place, though, where increment can come in, and, and this is just a really good example, this is from Gold Hill Mesa in Colorado Springs. I don't know how many of you are familiar with it, but it was an old gold mining site. They tried for decades to get the gold out. Couple decades ago, they decided, you know, they've tried everything, and it was never going to be cost-effective, and so they just decided, let's just develop the property. And this is when they brought us back in to do a second round of financing, but this is what's important from a private sector perspective, and I think really speaks to the heart of the urban renewal law. These are their costs, these were their cost categories for improvement, erosion control, you know, streets, gutters, environmental remediation, all those things cost this. Well, if they had gone to the planning department or building department of Colorado Springs, and they said, well, you're going to have to do these things, the first question is, well, if they have to do them anyway, why is that eligible? It's only eligible at the per land price, or the per linear foot, or whatever it is, that it would be under normal circumstances. It's the extraordinary circumstances that existed on that site that made that development of that property infeasible from a financial standpoint. So it's the difference between what they would have paid in an unconstricted area where conditions were normal, not extraordinary, and what that additional per-unit cost is. That nexus, that's an eligible expense. And it makes sense if you think about it, because what happens is, if you want to invest in property, you're going to try and go where there's the path of least resistance, which means you've got favorable zoning, it's consistent with the community vision, you can get your financing, you don't have any physical constraints, you don't have environmental contamination, you've got access to your infrastructure, all those things. When those don't exist, you go somewhere else. And where they, those challenges seem to exist the less frequently are on the edge of your community, in greenfield, in easy development sites, and not in infill areas or established areas. And therefore, that's the tool. This is the tool that's brought in to level that playing field. Revenue sharing discussions. This shows, this was from Leadville, and this is something that we would do, or whoever helps you would do, early on, when you're identifying those taxing entities and you want to begin those discussions. You identify all the taxing entities within the boundary area. You have identified your urban renewal project. You're quantifying the value of that over the 25 years that you're allowed to have the TIF, and how much revenue it's going to generate in terms of property tax and/or sales tax. And then you figure out what those allocations would have been to the taxing entities over, you know, and just, we did it in five-year cycles there. Now, the big caveat is, and this is where everybody gets twisted up about urban renewal, I mean, the truth is, urban renewal projects that truly are challenged, like the one you saw before, won't happen without something to fill that gap. We showed you why it was cost prohibitive. So it's kind of a fallacy to say, this would have gone to the taxing entities anyway. The discussion then becomes with the urban renewal authority and the taxing entity representatives, so what's causing that gap? Do we agree with that gap? And how much do we need to offset any potential impact and stay on the same track that we're moving? It's almost like negotiating their chip-in in the project, and just both of you deciding what's that right number. Many times, I can tell you, for very, very small districts, not sanitation, but like, we'll get like cemetery districts.
Library district.
Library districts. They'll say, the number's so insignificant, they're like, boy, if my contribution or our contribution pushes it over, do it, right? For the 25 years. Others feel that they need some share of that, but they're fine with some portion of their revenue going to the project, because they, they too get, they're not, nobody's going to get anything if the project can't happen. So that's the kind of discussion you have, and this is the kind of resource we bring to that.
Is that on a project, a project basis, or is that a part of the district?
So in, in this instance, we knew of one real project that was going to move forward with adoption of the plan, and it was about 100 acres, about three phases. We also knew of a couple, it included that this big parcel that was old rail yard, and it was going to be redeveloped. And we also knew of a couple of smaller, more minor redevelopment projects in downtown. Those were the only ones we knew of, and so that, right there, that, those calculations reflect those known projects. So oftentimes, what we do is, we'll, you know, you can only deal with what you know. And so we calculate that, but when we set up our agreements with the different taxing entities, again, there's a range of things. Some just say, let's just do this once, we're going to keep X percent, you can have X percent, we never have to talk about it again. Some say, every project that comes in, let's take a look and figure out what those impacts are. We've had it all over the board. So, you know, again, whether this gets revisited, this was just those known projects at the beginning.
And let me add to that if I could, because terminology is important. The statute defines project as the entire plan area. So what the statute requires is that you figure out the percentage at the beginning of the project, because the project and the plan are the same. Now theoretically, you could put in the agreement that you'll, as different activities happen within the project area, you can revisit somehow, in some way, if it's beyond a threshold. But the statute only requires one agreement at the beginning of the project area, which is the entire project area. So if you were to look at Ann's map, I think the previous slide, where there were hypothetically three areas, there would be potentially three agreements, one for each area. So I don't want, I don't want her answer to mislead that the statute requires that you do a new agreement each time there's a development activity, because that's not what the statute requires.
Right, yep.
Requires or allows?
What the statute requires is an agreement with each taxing entity for the project area, one agreement. That agreement can simp, could trigger additional agreements, that's allowed, but not required.
Yep. Thanks for that clarification. Okay, and here's our TIF calculation, and actually, Corey and we were in a meeting the other day, and I will tell you, it's been the bane of our existence for as long as we've been doing this. When people say, the base is frozen, I'm like, it's not frozen. Why, why do people say it's frozen? I mean, because to me, frozen means in a movable object, right? The, and this is important for the taxing entities. The every other year tax assessment, I guess that's the way we used to say it now, I guess they're, they're assessing in the interim years, but let's just say that big reassessment, that general reassessment that happens every other year, the base continues to go up. We call it a nat, the natural increase, it's what's happening today, what always happens, that they go out, they look at properties in an area, they being the county assessor, and they adjust the base, okay? So it does not freeze in time. It's not the same amount it was on year one as it'll be in year 25. This green line is, let's say you had a hotel come online, a facade improvement downtown, and a private restaurant go on the River Walk. Okay, let's just say that. And let's say those all happen kind of over time, and this is your 25-year timeframe for the increment, it's just the difference of that stepping up base. All this is going to the taxing entities as well as they increase. It's just the difference, the new revenue that's coming from new investment, okay? That's the only thing that goes to the urban renewal area to be reinvested in the area. It's just really important, people often confuse that one. Okay, so I know it's really small, and really, again, I'm just going to tell you what you have. We'll look at it, talk about it if you want to, or we don't have to, and you have it as a resource. I've seen so many versions of these over the years, and, you know, some are accurate and some aren't, and then sometimes things change. What we did was, we wanted to prepare this matrix of special districts, special Title 32 district mechanisms, like public improvement fees, urban renewal authority versus downtown development authority, we've got the bid that falls under the special districts. And we wanted to look at it both from a private developer perspective, like which one fits my circumstance, whatever my issue is, but also from a council perspective, or a community perspective, saying, what makes sense? And I think a really good example, kind of an extreme example that drives it home, we were doing an urban renewal plan in an area, and this community got a brand-new city manager who had come from out of state, and that's significant, because, you know, urban renewal, a lot of it's the same from state to state, but it, you know, the devil's in the details. Well, this person did not like urban renewal because of how things had turned out in his state. He came, and his first challenge question to council was, well, why are we doing an urban renewal plan when we could just do a business improvement district? And I was like, because we're talking apples and oranges, they're completely different things. Not only is the magnitude of what you can do with urban renewal, you know, for instance, parking structures and capital projects and that, but urban renewal does not increase taxes at all. It just, the only revenue that comes into an urban renewal area is, or the most obvious revenue, short of grants and loans and that, is the new revenue from new investment. So, you know, no harm, no foul, no revenue, no development, no revenue. A business improvement district is a much smaller volume amount, but that is an agreement on the part of property owners in an area to levy additional taxes on them. These are wildly different tools. So it's very important to pick the one that matches your circumstance. And two, with downtown authorities and urban renewal authorities. And the example here, and because I doubt we'll end up doing the before and afters in discussion, but it's been fascinating, I think, for us, many people, or many communities over the last couple of decades, I shouldn't say many, some, have decided to do a downtown development authority, either because the only projects they really thought they were going to do, or that would need the money, or whatever, was going to be in downtown. So why would they not just do a DDA? Because that covers your central business, that's where you use it, your central business district. So some communities did that, only to find out that they ended up, down the road, needing to do a project, maybe a gateway project or something further out, there was an environmental contamination, or something that was making the project financially infeasible. And it was interesting, because some of the things we heard, now some, some it worked out really well for them. And others, they said, well, we think the DDA is not really another form of government like a URA is. I would argue that's not necessarily an accurate take on it, but that was their perception. And so let's just do the DDA. Then down the road, they end up needing to provide assistance further out, and now they have both. And there are plenty of communities that have a DDA and a URA. So it was interesting what their intentions were, and I totally get it, and I don't think that path was wrong. It's just good to kind of think about it ahead of time. And you can't possibly know everything that's going to happen, but that's just one of those questions you need to be asking yourself. I think as far as we know, you're looking at things beyond downtown. To us, that would mean, you know, unless you want two entities, you might as well have one, but, but again, you, you have many more things to consider. So anyway, that's what this is, and then the, and it's two pages. Then the other handout is kind of trying to put it into words. So we kind of took all of our notes over the years, and all the conversations we've had with communities, and developers, and property owners, and, and kind of posed the question, and then provided an answer. And so this is a Q and A that relates specifically to which tool would we use in certain circumstances. So hopefully that helps. And then the last thing that we did was the frequently asked questions about urban renewal. We're providing that to you. Please feel free, if you go down this road, to, to post it on your website. It's, it's helped a lot. I can't tell you how many times a community will ask us to do a community forum early in the process, to answer people's questions, or, you know, during, early in the planning process, and then we get to the public hearing, and so many people say, well, I was wondering about this, but I, I got my answer. So it really, I mean, it, hopefully, we keep improving it, but it seems to kind of do what's intended, which is to, to answer some of those questions early, so that people don't get to the public hearing, and, and they're asking things out of fear, or lack of information, or they got bad information on, online, which there's tons of. You know, if people really want to be informed, this works. So we're providing that to you. And then, this is where I think we were going to cut it off. Everything beyond this, unless you want us to go forward, talks about the condition survey, we've got photographs of some things we look at, because that often comes up, well, how'd you decide there was blight there? Content of the urban renewal plan, and then we've got those before and after pictures in the glossary. So we are happy to do that, or stop here and answer questions.
Would like to, and questions? No questions, very good. No. Is that something that we would do, to see what we would do? A survey, isn't a questionnaire to property owners? What is that?
So the survey, I am going to show you. So the survey is both a physical investigation of the area, and it's usually done by a third-party arms-length person, so yes, and us, or somebody else. We literally, and everybody does it a little differently, the statute just requires an investigation and identification of blighting conditions in, in the area. So kind of the least you would do is kind of drive through the area, and then maybe interview some public works or staff people, do some online research for like environmental contamination, or underground mines, or things like that, things you can get from secondary, tertiary sources. We do every single parcel. But when we report back to you, there's a couple of ways to do that. It's not, it's not an indictment of anybody. Many, many of the factors are found in public spaces and right-of-ways. We never go onto property, private property, we never go in to private property unless we're invited to do so, and that does happen. So it's really from a public space that we're making physical observations. But we don't report it back, like this address has these blighting factors in front of it or on it, because we don't care. That's not the point. The point is to get a designation in this area, so we're essentially shining a light on things that need to get fixed, or things that might be adverse for private property owners, that there might then be resources available to do that. So it's a written report, it's photographs, it's a narrative, maps, other things that just illustrate findings. And we're just, all we're saying is, we went out and looked at this area based on our objective lens, because we've done so many of these in the context that we're in, and this is what we identify. And then we present that to you.
And Mayor, it's, it's a misnomer to use the term survey, but it's a survey of conditions in the area. So it's physical conditions in the area, it's, and it's actually called a conditions survey, not just a survey. And then you can also delve into, for example, if there are title issues that make, make property not marketable. You include that, because that's one of the criteria you look at. But it is a survey of conditions, not a survey of property, not a survey of people. But it is a survey of conditions, not a survey of property, not a survey of people.
Okay. My business, that would be something where you put stakes in the ground when you're...
Right.
Oh!
So not that at all.
Not that. Thank you. Yeah.
We all come from different things.
Absolutely. Thank you.
The other thing is that, do their surveys ever come back and say, "You know, maybe this isn't appropriate for what you're doing"?
Aurora had one last week.
There you go.
That they actually did, they went through the entire process, did the conditions survey, and the city council determined for that particular area that they did not find blight.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Ms. Smith?
Absolutely.
That's actually a good point that Cory made, because it is city council that has to make that determination. You know, you're presented with the conditions survey, so we do the research for you, show you, but it's up to you all as city council to say, you know, this qualifies as an urban renewal area.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I do have a couple of questions. How do the negotiations with the other taxing entities, how does that look, and how does that typically go?
I mean, I'll start it, and I bet Cory might want to...
So you should know that I was a mediator on a negotiation process that Ann's...
The one I said went off the rails?
Yeah.
Woo! That was an interesting dance. Talk about dancing. Yes. So, in a perfect world, and it's a perfect world a lot of the time, we present those impact reports to your executive director. That might be, you know, Ryan, you know, whoever ends up being the, kind of the day-to-day person for urban renewal. Typically, what we like to do is give you the information. Sometimes it's one or two, as long as you're not violating sunshine laws and all that. And your technical person, and oftentimes we'll come and sit in the back of the room and answer any questions. But you go and sit down with whoever the taxing entity identifies to talk to, share the numbers with, and ideally, there's an exchange of information. They look at what we've done. "Oh, you're right there. Maybe you're a little off on that calculation." Or "We just had this impact study done, and that's going to put us over, you know, our threshold capacity or whatever. Oh, great, we didn't have that." Okay. So ideally, there's that exchange and rerunning of numbers and back and forth. But we prefer it that, you know, it's a representative, your technical representative, your elected official. If you, they, or you decide, "We really want to have Cory there to answer questions," you know, your legal representation, it's only fair to let them know, so they have theirs. It can still be really great and productive, depending on the relationship. If there's concerns, sometimes people aren't as forthcoming. So you decide the right makeup to be the most productive in terms of that. But it's really a back-and-forth exchange until you both arrive at the right number.
And I'd add a couple of things. I'm thrilled that there are people here tonight from the taxing entities, because I think what often takes these off the rails is the element of surprise. And so having the taxing entities involved from the inception is important. It is supposed to be about the impacts in the plan area. So hypothetically, if you have a vacant property that then you're building something on, there's going to be a lot more significant impacts on fire, for example, because they're providing services they didn't provide before. On the other hand, if you are taking an old building and refurbishing it, and perhaps sprinkling it and creating a lot of additional fire protection, it might be less impacts, you would hope. If you're doing an assisted living facility, I'm going to guess you're going to have more impacts, because you're going to have emergency medical responding. So those are the kind of things you look at. With the county, you're going to look at all of the services the county provides. What kind of impacts is this development going to trigger that aren't covered essentially by the base? And it is a back-and-forth, and invariably, there's going to be disagreements. But if everyone is working from the beginning and knows it's coming, the hope is those disagreements are less, and you can find the middle ground. If you have to give, if the other taxing entities think that they need all, 100% of the increment, you're not going to have any increment to do a project. So that's the back-and-forth.
Okay. I have another question. The Colorado schools to the state have kind of a unique funding mechanism. Do they apply as one of the taxing entities that would need to be negotiated with?
Yes. And when you say schools, you don't necessarily mean community college, you mean K through 12. Well, I wanted to make sure. So it is unique in terms of what's called the backfill, which, boy, there's a lot of ways to describe it. And the bottom line is, is that for a loss in revenue from a variety of different things that can happen, value increases, whatever, and urban renewal, the diversion of any taxable revenue is one of those things. But anything that kind of creates an imbalance in one district versus another, the state levels it out. Okay? So that's why some communities will say, "Well, they're backfilled, so your discussion should be with the hospital district and the county," or, you know, whoever might actually think they have an impact. I can tell you, in the Leadville example, they said, "Yeah, we're not asking for increment." But they wanted two, they wanted two other things. One was, if we have a bond election and we go get, you know, additional mills for additional revenue, we want to make sure that goes to us. That if we're going to go out and have this election, it just doesn't go to the authority. Well, the statute even...
Statute now requires that.
Protects against that.
It didn't used to.
But they wanted an agreement, just to make it clear. Absolutely. Of course.
But let me ask you, the answer to your question, the quick answer is that the school district is one of the taxing entities that you have to negotiate with. Most definitely.
Yeah.
Okay. And do you have one more? That's okay. So at the beginning of the URA, is there ability to get bonds or loans on the potential tax money, so that you can kind of kickstart the infrastructure and capital improvements and investing?
Yeah. So there's two, I'll just answer two ways. From an administrative standpoint, you kind of got to get things going, right? I mean, you got to do the plan and those three documents, and you got to get it in place. And sometimes you'll use your staff, but maybe a portion of their hours, not spent as a true city employee, but as the executive director, let's say, of the authority. Many times, there's a loan between the city and the urban renewal authority, just on that administrative level. On the bigger level, in terms of infrastructure and that, absolutely. As long as there's private sector development that's imminent or ongoing, that will be counted as increment. It's got to be increment generating revenue, because that will be what is paid to the debt service on the bond. So if the urban renewal authority issues those bonds, and the good news is, that's a separate taxing entity from the city. So they do it, it's not going to suck up any of your tax rating, or, you know, any of your capacity. They're doing it. But the only way those bonds are going to sell in the urban renewal bond market is if you can show future revenue, that it can be pledged to pay off that debt service. Okay?
Okay. Commissioner Payne, would you mind stepping up to the mic so we can, or we can do you some TV time?
Well, Ashley's question actually kind of answered mine, but what I was going to ask you is, can you walk us through a typical project? Let's say we have the urban renewal authority in the corridor down here, and the city has the Skyline Steel property, and we're going to sell it to a private contractor who wants to put in a four-star restaurant. Can you walk us through the process on a TIF? How it affects us? How it gets paid back? How much skin in the game does the private investor have with the TIF? And where do bonds come in to something like that? And walk us through the whole process. And I think we can envision that actually happening in that piece of property. Does that, does my question make sense, I guess?
Oh, it's a perfect question. Yeah. No, but stay there, because I don't think I noted all of it. I might have got some of it. So the first thing is, it's in the municipal boundaries. Let's say it's in the urban renewal area. It's going from public ownership to private ownership. That's helpful, because if it was public land, you can't TIF, you know, unless you voluntarily agree to that.
So they'd have to actually buy the land, or...
Well, transfer, however you guys want to do that. I mean, that could be one of the things. You transfer for a dollar, and you take a preferred return, or, you know, later.
But that's how you create TIF, is to take it from public to private, so that it's taxed, being taxed.
Because in 20 years, you're going to be making a whole lot more in taxes.
Right.
Yep. Exactly. So now you've got this vacant land, and let's say it was generating $100, and, you know, well, it was public, so it wasn't doing anything. There was nothing...
Well, it was a private business, and the city grabbed it.
Okay.
Yeah. For lack of a better term.
Now it's going to, now it's, it's going to, let's say they come in for entitlements, they're going to build the building, a restaurant, right? Okay, so it's going to be generating property and sales tax. There's two ways to finance projects, because what we were talking about a little earlier were kind of major capital investments. Let's look at this one. There's, you probably wouldn't do a bond for this. What would happen is, the private developer would bring you a business plan, just like they probably brought the same one they brought to the bank. This is really important. We always say, TIF is the last money in, not the first money in. Okay? So just like if I wanted to build a restaurant, anywhere, TIF or not, I have to do a business plan. I have to go get my financing. Maybe I'm using my land as collateral, whatever that is. But let's say I get a 90% business loan, okay? 10% after I've run my revenue projections and my development cost estimates, let's say 10% I can't cover, but the 10, part of what's causing that 10% deficit is extraordinary conditions, or conditions I'm in the urban renewal area, and my costs are more because of X, Y, or Z. Okay? Let's say, you know, I always think the perfect example is, you know, my building's not, if it's an existing building and it's not up to code, and I want to bring it up to code, but I come to your building department, and they say, "Well, if you put that addition on, you've just spent $6,000, and that's our threshold to trigger you bringing the whole building up to code." So they never bring it up to code. And that's not what you want, right? So let's say they come in, and they've got these conditions that exist within the area that are making their project more challenging for one reason or another. Maybe your comprehensive plan says, "We don't have design standards, but our goal for this area is to have everything done a little bit better to raise all ships." Okay. So they come to you, and they say, "We've got, I've got 90% of my money. I've got the bank to commit to it, but this last 10% is keeping me from moving this project forward." They have to show you what is making it, you know, an insurmountable financially unfeasible project. Let's say you're on the urban renewal authority board, whether you're as council or if you have an appointed board, and you guys look at that, just like the lender did, and you say, "Yeah, those are eligible expenses." You forecast how much TIF that project's going to generate, and you then can make a pledge back to them to say, "We're going to give you back X amount to fill that 10%, let's say, or some portion of that 10%." Let's say you filled 8%, they'd still have to go get two somewhere else. But whatever the costs were, that you can say, "Yeah, it's because of those conditions why we created this urban renewal area, that at least either 8% or 10% of that gap exists there, we're going to reimburse you the new taxes you're going to be paying for building that." So...
So where does that physically come from?
It's a letter. So believe it or not, it is a financeable promise to pay. The letter that the urban renewal authority gives you, you go to the lender, okay, and say, "This is my other revenue stream." Okay? And they'll either give 100% to you for that. Your debt service would then come from two sources. The revenue your project is generating, and maybe it's every six months, maybe it's every year. As the county starts to collect that increment and then transfer it to the urban renewal authority, they're writing a check and handing it back.
So that comes back, does that come back also from the special district, school district, county, city, all the entities?
The county collects all the taxes. Whatever taxes were collected that were generated, that are considered increment, right? That is a, like a group of money, and that goes to the urban renewal authority. If during these negotiations, let's say, the library district kept 10%, and somebody else didn't, wanted a whole pass-through to you, and another got 20%, you set those systems up with the county and your urban renewal authority.
So whatever net revenue comes to the urban renewal authority, then you can use those funds to negotiate these kinds of individual deals for a property owner. And, you know, for a relatively small project like that, Ann's right, you wouldn't go out to the bond market for that, but you would do like an annual reimbursement. The urban renewal authority just essentially writes that person a check for the amount of TIF revenue that they generated that year. And it can be negotiated, you know, a percentage of it, the time period, you know, so you could end up giving them half back for 10 years.
Commissioner Payne, let me see if I can give, with Skyline, there's another way, there's a couple ways to do it, and they're describing this. Increment, the dollars that are generated, goes directly to the urban renewal authority. So it is paid directly from the county to the authority. And then from the authority, they can decide how to distribute it. So let's say the 90% example, that there's $250,000 that the developer fronts, but that they don't have coverage for. The urban renewal authority can enter into a deal that says, "We will pay you back that $250,000 from what you generate in property tax increment." The risk is on the developer, because if they don't generate the increment, they don't get paid back. But if the increment comes in, then the urban renewal authority pays it back to the developer. And so that is a very typical way to finance. Other urban renewal authorities might say, "We'll give you the property at no cost, so long as you develop it in a certain way." And that's the contribution. And then the other tool that an urban renewal authority has, if the city chooses to give it this tool, is it can also use sales tax increment. So it can say, "If you generate new sales tax, you can get that as a reimbursement mechanism also."
So the long game is, all of us will eventually, 10 years, 20 years, we're going to have a lot more revenue coming in.
Well, yeah, I think it's...
Or more revenue. I would say sooner than that. And that's one of the, I think that's one of the, and I'm an advocate, so I want to, I've got a bias, and I, but I think other taxing entities have a misconception that Ann's slide touched on, that the base never increases. If you have a reassessment year, and the entire area goes up, so does the area in the urban renewal authority. Oftentimes, the urban renewal authority is actually triggering the raise, not only within the urban renewal area, but if the urban renewal authority area grows by, let's say, 10%, and the rest of the county grows at zero, actually, it'll bring up the areas outside of the urban renewal authority. So the base goes up, as do the neighboring properties. So it is true that you don't get the increment for 25 years. Absolutely. But that doesn't mean the property tax is frozen, because the base goes up, and but for the development, you're getting zero.
You can see this snowballing in, with the neighboring properties.
And I think Golden has done some analysis. Arvada has done some analysis. I know that in Laramie County, they've done some analysis of how much the other taxing authorities' revenues have actually increased. So that information's out there, and we can get it for you to show that it's, a lot of this is a misnomer.
A perfect example is Belmar, and I don't know if you're familiar, but it was an old shopping center, regional shopping center in Lakewood, and it redeveloped. The boundaries are, you know, the northern boundary is Alameda, but all the retail on the north side of Alameda, that's not in the urban renewal area, and every single parcel is redeveloped now, because they've got this really viable thing across the street. So that's how everybody gained, and none of that was diverted. The other thing is, not every project that happens in the urban renewal area is going to need to get TIF back. Some are, their numbers are going to work. They're not going to come to you. Some are going to come to you, and you're going to say, "I'm sorry, that..."
There's no gap.
Yeah, there's no gap. It's not consistent with the vision. We don't have to give you the money.
They're tagging along.
Absolutely.
Right. Exactly.
They're basically tagging along with what already got started. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Meisner?
My question, I didn't have a question, other than I got a question for Rob, whether he's got any.
Step up to the mic, Mr. Brown.
I just want to hear what you want to say, or what's your...
I just want to hear what you want to say, or what your thought is.
I'm an advocate as well, and to me, the increment, because it's a source of repayment for the loan by the developer, that means the increment is being reinvested. So in my view, the community is getting the entire increment back. It becomes, it's in a different bucket, I admit that, but it's coming back. So to me, this is an important tool. I've participated in two such projects, and I've found both of them to be very important in getting jobs done. And the most recent one was Old Town Arvada. And I think that's a great example of how that money was reinvested in the community. It's an important tool, and frankly, it's missing in our area, and it's limiting our development opportunities.
Thank you.
You may.
Yes. Would you introduce yourself? I'm sure everybody knows you, I'm not saying you're notorious.
Everybody else doesn't know me.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm Scott Johnson, I represent a few special districts, but as today, I'm acting out as the assistant chief of the fire district. I've got two questions, and it's just two scenarios, and I want to break this down to grassroots, whatever you want to say. So within this urban renewal authority, let's take a property that's vacant today, and let's take a property that has an existing structure. And I'm looking at it from the base portion of it. So today, let's just, I'm going to throw silly numbers out, the vacant property produces $100 in tax. The existing structure produces $700 in tax. What happens when A, you build something on the vacant property? And B, what happens when the existing structure gets improved? Does that base stay at 100 and 700, and then increment up as it goes? Or, so, answer that one.
Two separate pieces.
Two little separate pieces, yeah, like a vacant, what would happen in a vacant property, that then something, grow a hotel on it?
Yeah.
What happens? What is the increment there? Is there any? Or do you stay at the base increment, is the $100 of tax, it was there as a vacant property? Is that the base?
Yeah, no, so the value of that property, if there's an improvement in land, combined, look at that as a value.
Gotcha.
Okay? So if you put something on, a vacant piece of ground, that's going to be a much more significant amount of increment than, possibly, than if you had a piece of ground that had an improvement, assuming it's a minor improvement.
Sure.
You know, just volume-wise, it's going to be quite a bit less for just the improvement.
So, sorry, I'm just asking, from the taxing districts, you know, let's take the vacant ground, and let's just concentrate on that. If we're only getting $100 from it today, and they put a 40-story hotel on it, our base stays at $100 for the next 20 years.
No.
No.
No, 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 but increments. It does go up as valuations go up, I understand that.
Right.
But we never see the increment is the-
No, but your point, your point's a good one. That's, so that, if, but the alternative is, if it remain, if but for urban renewal-
Right.
It will stay at 100 forever.
I understand that. I get that.
But you're right. And I will say that fire districts create a unique problem that other taxing entities don't have. And the reason is, you don't, you are totally based on mill levy. You don't have, you know, a water sanitation district, for example, gets fees for services. Fire districts don't. So typically, the negotiations with fire districts are much more difficult, because to use your hotel example, there is no doubt that there will be a service impact. I mean, I use the assisted living facility example, because people fall out of bed, unfortunately, at those, and typically, you have to call the fire department. And so you know that there's a service impact.
Right.
That's not always covered by the base. The example of the $700, it will likely be assessed at a higher value for a building permit that's issued that remodels the $700 building, and now it's $1,000.
Yeah.
Okay? So the base is $700. The difference between that and the new assessed value is the increment.
Right.
The question will be, as part of this negotiating process, is there an impact on the fire district? Because you would hope that now you had an old dilapidated building, and now you have a new building with sprinklers.
Sure. And that's the only thing, we just want to kind of, to be, break it down. I mean, that was, what is the increment, and where does that fall? And that's just to find out how that works.
Yeah, and I was going to say exactly what Corey did. That is the goal. This is an example, don't take this to the bank yet, but an example I often think of for fire districts is, what's that, Business Park on Highway 36?
Inverness.
Interlock.
Interlock, I'm sorry, Anna Interlock.
And so what happened was, they built, what was that hotel? It was like a western, and it was vertical, it was probably the most vertical building on Highway 36. And what, and it was bare ground, nothing had yet happened, they were still planning, but they wanted this kind of convention center hotel. And they, the fire district worked with the urban renewal authority, and what it really came down to in terms of impact was, they said, we get that this is going to go from generating hardly anything to something, but our real issue is that we don't have a fire engine that can serve a building that tall.
Right.
Increment was used to buy that fire engine.
So, and that's where you broke down early, that's-
It's just an example of, so, yeah, you are putting, nobody, I think, is ignoring that you're, you know, you're putting skin in the game too, because you know what your current situation is, and, you know, the best proof that you have, the market wasn't getting it done, is it hasn't gotten done, and this is not market. So you accept that, but you also can't be upside down. And so that's the discussion.
Right. And that's where we want to say, you know, like I said, we're not, we're not saying no or yes to this. I mean, it's a very interesting conversation, because, just to find out how that works. So, answered exactly what I wanted.
And I think that's where the legislation has actually given districts like yourselves, the fire districts, the water and sand districts, a more formal way to participate and negotiate. So that's, you know, I think that's a good thing for the districts.
Any questions, me?
You just got a new fire truck, didn't you?
We do have a new fire truck.
Could've waited.
So, yeah, the fire truck's not a issue.
Could've bought that for us.
Could've bought that for us. Well, we're going to buy a ladder truck, we have to replace our ladder truck if we want that built.
I have to tell you a really quick funny story, though, because we do so much of this work, it seemed like we were working in communities that were in this one district, this one fire district, quite a bit. And it's like, I was always at these meetings, chief was always at the meeting, I'd go in and go, hey, Anne, I'm like, hey, chief, you know, here we go again. And I teasingly said to him, I go, my house was on fire, you would put it out, wouldn't you? And so anyway, we joked back and forth. But, yeah, there's some good examples out there.
Well, I'm sure there are. And like I said, we're not trying to, we just, again, want to know what's happening with it, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
No.
And that's what I'm gathering, yeah.
It's going to require a partnership.
That's what I'm saying, that's the way it works.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Well, and it's easy to, you know, for council on their side, if, let's say, or whoever the urban renewal authority is, you know, I've watched them in these negotiations, and they're like, oh, but, you know, let's just give them all, you know, or let, and there's like these arbitrary numbers falling around. It's like, wait a minute, you're going to like, give it away out of the kindness of your heart and be left with no projects? There's no point in doing this. So the more we can really get our arms around the numbers, the better for everyone.
The question that came to mind when you talked about the extra cost associated with the River Art, the Skyline Steel site that we bought, that's a flood plain. Would that be considered? Because there's going to be extra cost for that building, so that would be-
Absolutely.
I think that's an obvious question, but I had to ask it.
No, absolutely. And it works like, even Corey mentioned, title, anything, and you'll get this as a surveyor, you know, anything on the site, a circumstance, a legal provision, whatever it is, that limits the developable area and/or requires the relocation of improvements or enhanced improvements, or whatever that is, that all falls as an impact.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Ryan?
Anne, can you talk a little bit about urban renewal and how it relates to historic preservation?
Oh, thank you. Yes, and that was one of the slides, and I made a note to myself to say something. That's another thing that I was actually surprised I heard, but then I thought about it, and I go, yeah, I can see why they might have thought that. Historic preservation is a huge friend of urban renewal and vice versa. When we started the Leadville project, there was a woman who was leaving council, she was an outgoing council member, and she was putting out a lot of information that this is the worst thing for their downtown, that it was not a friendly source for historic preservation. I was just stunned. The truth is, and we've made many presentations at the State Historic Preservation Conference about urban renewal, you know, the truth is, many people in a community, they've got these precious treasures, and if you're a property owner, and let's say it's not, you know, even if it is officially designated or even not, but it's considered significant, sometimes it's, too often, it's very cost prohibitive to restore it or maintain it, or, you know, what people really are looking for is to kind of keep it around in good shape. Urban renewal can be used for those extraordinary expenses as well. So, so, so important when you have historically significant even buildings or improvements or whatever in your area, it'll really help your objectives quite a bit. Thank you for reminding us.
Yeah, and if you can apply for and get the tax credits that go with that, that speaks to what Anne said about layering financing. Oftentimes, well, probably 90% of the time, urban renewal isn't enough, you know, TIF isn't enough, there has to be other layers, other sources of funding added to fill those gaps. And, boy, historic tax credits is an easy one.
I have a question that goes along with that. So here's just, here's a scenario. We have an old hotel downtown that's, I'm currently going under bids, and construction bids, and getting financing. If, let's say, those construction bids came back really high, and then there was a gap between the funding available and the bids, could the URA fill that gap in to make that project come into fruition?
Yeah, and it would depend on what type of improvements. You've got to sort of categorize them to make sure they're eligible. I mean, an example I like to give is, for those of you who are familiar with the Wheatridge Cyclory in Wheatridge, it's one of the most iconic bike shops in the metro area. And they did an improvement project, they had a lot of utility work, a lot of unexpected work like that, they had a mural that was paid for. It was things that that particular urban renewal authority found was eligible. So things like probably fixtures in the hotel, not eligible. Facade improvements, public improvements, extraordinary costs associated with the redevelopment of the site would all be likely eligible.
Foundation work.
Bring in the site, or the building up to code.
Code.
Asbestos or lead-based paint.
Yeah, exactly. Environmental.
Yep.
So in that case, how long would it take to get a URA set up in that project?
I mean, I'm guessing, I mean, I think the five to 12 months, a lot of it, if you were to start now, a lot of it is going to depend, frankly, on the discussions with the taxing entities.
Okay.
I saw a hand glove, so I think Mr. Brown has volunteered.
No. You said five months earlier.
No, I saw your hand glove, I'm sorry.
I knew I was going to regret that.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just want to make the point on top of Mayor Protem Smith's comments, that, you know, as far as eminent projects, you know, the Hotel St. Cloud is not the only one. We have other projects in the near future that could benefit from a URA.
Questions? Confused? Everybody in the audience?
I guess I'd just like to ask our taxing entities in the audience, are you willing to sit down and start having some talks? Okay. So five to 12 months, I mean, let's say 12 months, we need, I mean, we're on the brink of really wanting to make some really cool things happen, and I think we need to start those talks sooner than later.
I agree, I think that's the mood of council, is that correct? Should we, what do you think? Everybody in favor? Did I see a thumb? Yeah, let's do a thumbs thing. Caitlin? That's a healthy thumb, too. She did, you, thumbs?
Yeah, I'm going to go for two.
Two, all right. All right? Good. Well, it looks like that's unanimous. I thought too. Okay, anybody else? Well, we're adjourned, thank you.
Get moving.
Thank you.